Hello, everybody. I hereby call this special meeting of the Corder Madera Town Council to order. We will start with a roll call.
Councilmember Andrews. Councilmember Beckman.
Here.
Councilmember Casissa. Vice Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Avasio.
Here. And now if you could join us in a salute to the flag.
Do we meet as a flag? The United States of America. We're proud of it for what it's been. One nation, one God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. This is always one of my favorite kind of meetings when we get to talk to people in town about their desires to get involved with the community. It's always a wonderful thing to meet new people and hear how many really great dedicated people we have living in our town. So let's get going. Actually, we first have to be open for a moment for public comment. If there's anybody here or online who has a comment before we start.
No hands raised from attendees online, no email public comment for this meeting either.
Okay, very good. So then we'll move on to item three, which is the interviews of advisory board applicants. The town council will interview the following applicants for consideration for appointment to serve a term on the body that was applied for. These times are approximate and subject to change. So we will start with the Parks and Recreation Commission. And I have, or should have, if we do, have Nikita. Hi, Nikita, welcome. And Brooke. Is Brooke here?
She did confirm that she would be arriving. I think that's probably her coming in through the door. Mayor Avasio, if you don't mind before we start, if I could just provide a little background for the record.
Excellent.
So this year's advisory body recruitment started on February 28th, and we closed it on May 9th to give the opportunity for anyone who attended the volunteer fair to apply if they were interested and learned about the advisory bodies at that event. So similar to last year, for all of the applicants, they were informed of the type of commitment involved in each advisory body after they applied. And then staff confirmed if they wished to continue moving forward. And from that, the applicants that you will be interviewing today are new and were advised that they would have to interview before you as a council. And then any incumbents whose seats are being sought for by new applicants were also given the option to, were also told that they would have to interview before council. However, incumbents were given the option to either respond to interview questions via email or come in person. And for this meeting, the two incumbents for BPAC, who you will be interviewing, decided they would come in person. So no one submitted any responses to questions in writing. And for each body, so staff made recommendations of appointments for each body. And if you'd like, we can just go through that when we're at the deliberation point, if you'd like.
That sounds fine. We don't have to go over it twice. I think one time is good.
Thank you.
Okay. So was that Brooke Hansen who walked in? Hello, Brooke, welcome. And it's Nikita Candiera. Candaria? Candaria. I think you get to go first. If you could step up to the microphone. And am I pronouncing it right, Nikita?
Yeah.
Nikita. So as you got the questions ahead of time, your first opportunity is for a one-minute opening statement where you just can share a little bit about yourself and sort of your time in Corder Madera.
Perfect. So I actually was born in Corder Madera, and I lived here for most of my life, and then spent some time in India and went to university in Scotland. But most of my formidable years have been in Corder Madera. I have a couple of businesses between San Rafael and Sausalito, so I really don't ever leave our little bubble of Marin. My parents have lived here since Dad graduated his undergrad and moved here from Berkeley. And in terms of involvement, I, obviously, I was over in Scotland, so it was a little hard to get involved in anything. And I'm still a little bit on the younger side, so don't have too many years of experience behind me. But I feel like wherever I've settled down, I've always found a way to get involved in the community. In India, when I lived there, I built two OB-GYN clinics. In Scotland, I was really involved in helping train youth into the rugby season. So it's always been some version of what I can find works well with my skill set.
What is it about Parks and Recreation and the commission that interests you? What qualities, experience, and expertise would you bring? And you have two minutes here, so can relax a little more.
Okay, so I won't speed talk down this one. But so we have a venue. We started off as a restaurant in Sausalito, but now it's more of a venue.
Could I ask you to speak just a little closer to the microphone?
Of course.
Thank you.
So I was just saying that I have a venue in Sausalito where we end up putting together a lot of events, and it wasn't something that I would have thought would be my enjoyment or core competence, but it's been really interesting to see how creative you can get with getting enjoyment to people. And it's really funny because we've been talking about how in India, a lot of people are just like, you work, you work, you work. And there isn't that idea of now let's stop and have some fun and meet people in our community and actually see what the whole point of working is. And it's been really interesting to see everyone plan their events around just celebrating each other, celebrating new people. And so that's sort of where I came into the Parks and Rec. Usually, I'll always go for the accounting side or the math side because it's been more my core competence. But it's been really interesting to see how creative you can get with getting very different segments of the community together.
If I could just do a follow-up, the kinds of events you host in Sausalito, can you explain a little more of what that is?
Yeah, so we have a restaurant in Sausalito, and we're doing two to three events a day. We converted from a restaurant to an event space. So we do like public events, we do private events. So we get to get a little bit creative. So right now, we're planning a blindfolded dinner, and it's, everyone has to bring four people that would have never otherwise come into the community and things like that.
Well, sounds like fun. Okay.
We'll see. Could be dangerous.
So what is your, moving on to the next question, your familiarity with the Parks and Recreation Master Plan for Corder Madera? And what challenges do you see here for Corder Madera Parks and Rec in the next few years? And how do you envision those challenges being addressed?
So I've been following the master plan on and off and just kind of keeping tabs of what's going on. It's interesting because if we had had this conversation a little while ago, I would have said the ability to actually make bookings, right? Like the pickleball and stuff like that. But I know that's one of the big ones that we've addressed recently. Honestly, I think that it's the changing culture and idea of enjoyment, right? I think a year ago, pickleball didn't exist, and now it's all the rage, right? So I think every decade or so, there's a huge change in what people find enjoyable and what they're looking for. And I think with our community being as diverse, I think Corder Madera is probably one of the more diverse spaces in Marin generally in terms of age group, gender, demographics generally. So I think finding a way to be able to grow our recreational programs, to be able to adapt the very diverse group as everyone's interests continue to change.
And that takes us right to the next question, which is about how Corder Madera has so many different types of residents, all ages, people with children, seniors, retirees, single people. How would you balance the interests of these different groups? How do you make it work for everybody?
I mean, I think the first thing they teach you is you'll never make it work for everybody, right? So you have to win the big battles for each individual and then let them lose the little smaller ones here and there. So one of the things that we do at the restaurant, when I had a lot of investors in the project, was we would say, on a scale of one to 10, how important is this to you? And then we would rank it from every different individual. And then the people that thought the topic of concern was the most important, that was the direction that we took that one project in, and then it would kind of continue, right? So the thing that everyone cares the most about, they get to win and have their outcome come in that. And the things that they care a little bit less about, it hurts a little less to face that towards somebody else.
Okay. And if you could describe your strengths and weaknesses as they relate to working with a group like this? How do you solve your problem-solving style? And do you, you know, generally have enough time? You sound like a very busy person. Are you able to devote the time? Talk a little bit about how you make decisions and how you work with other people.
So I would say honestly, I think it comes down to a lot of humility and realizing that I don't know a lot about anything yet. So even when we opened the restaurant, right? So people were like, oh, you probably make unanimous decisions. And I was like, never. I go to the people that actually know what they're talking about, and I say, hey, you are living this. You have been a chef for 15 years. Tell me what my options are and why I should choose which one, right? And I think that's really the way that I've always done things. P&amp;G was always my inspiration there. They've always gone down to the ground, right? They've had their focus groups, they've had real encounters with people that are actually dealing with it on a day-to-day basis. So I would say in terms of decision-making, I'm a very, I want to just hear everything and then think about where your pros and cons lie, right? In terms of working with a team, fortunately or unfortunately, I feel like I've been doing that all my life. And so practice makes perfect. Yeah, I think that I've worked pretty well in a team. I'm also okay to, you know, say, okay, let's divide up this program and say, I'm really good at the accounting side and the math side. Let me take that home, let me figure something out, I'll come back to you with a proposal. You focus on going and talking to the boots on the ground, come back with their proposal, and let's find something that works with everything, right? Because you can't really have a project without the money or spend money on something that wouldn't work.
So second part of that question was, how would you reconcile your personal opinions and emotions if they were in conflict with the policies or regulations established by the town?
I feel like I'm a very compartmentalizing, objective person. So I feel like I would come in, I would look at the facts in front of me, and I'd be like, this is what we're looking at. And when I go home, that's the time I get to be my opinion, right? Like, we all wear a lot of hats, and when you're wearing a hat, that is all you're doing. You're not bringing home your other hats. So I don't know if that would be something that I would be too concerned about. I'm not a very emotional person or getting too attached to outcomes just if they don't align with what I want personally.
Okay. And I don't usually do this, but does anybody have a quick follow-up question? Anything you need to hear or ask? Okay, so there's this yes or no answer that I'm supposed to read to you. It's quite long. I'll try to do it fast. Members serve at the pleasure of the town council and may be removed at any time by a majority of the council vote. This council would like to emphasize that attending meetings is a fundamental part of every member's duties. Members are expected to attend all regularly scheduled meetings or a minimum of 75% of the scheduled meetings in a fiscal year. The Parks and Recreation Commission meets on the fourth Monday of each month, plus occasional special meetings as needed. Meetings begin at 6:30, run approximately two hours on average, although sometimes later. Commissioners are required to attend in person. In addition to regular meeting attendance, commission members are expected to read the agenda materials provided. Committee members may also participate in ad hoc subcommittees that conduct research and our outreach of meeting times. So considering these expectations, do you feel you are able to commit to the term that you have applied for on the Parks and Recreation Commission?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you also.
Thank you. Okay, we'd like to call up Brooke Hansen. Just a note, I forgot to ask you if you wanted to make a one-minute closing statement. So unless you have something you want to jump up and say, we'll just kind of keep going. Okay, thanks very much. Sorry about that. Okay, Brooke Hansen, how are you today?
Wonderful. Yourself?
Good. Nice to see you. This is an opportunity, the opening statement, just a minute to share a little bit about yourself.
Yeah, of course. I am a water polo player and a high school student. I found myself on the varsity starter lineup at the beginning of my sophomore year, which I found amazing because I put in a ton of work between the previous high school season and the current high school season at the time. And I found that my work truly did pay off, and I really hope to bring that dedication to the town council. I am a part of Redwood High School Leadership and a part of the management committee, meaning I organize rallies. We had Alumni Speaker Day recently. So we had a ton of alumni speakers come in and talk to the students and classes. I've organized the start-of-year packages, reached out to outside sources, and it's taught me a lot about management, communication, and organization, which are skills I hope to bring to town council.
Thank you. So what is it about the Parks and Recreation Commission here in Corder Madera specifically that interests you? And what would you bring to the commission?
I think I'd bring a fresh perspective. I grew up here, have lived here my entire life. I have very vivid memories of being two to seven, eight years old, coming to the town park with my sister, friends, playing and enjoying it, having soccer practices, looking forward to seeing friends, and honestly, just saw it as a way to connect. But what I found was is that making friends was a lot easier when I was two, three years old. I'd meet someone at the park, be like, you're my best friend now for the next 20 minutes, probably not see them again as often, but it gave me that sense of, okay, I do truly have a community. And I think growing up is kind of, almost felt disconnected, and I'd really like to bring that sense of community back. And I think for me, I would want, if given the chance, I think a really good way to establish more of a stronger community in older age groups would not necessarily be like old as in like teenagers, 16, but maybe like 11, 12, maybe 13 years old would be drive-in movies. I'm not sure if you've seen it, but they're like inflatable-type projectors, and I think that'd be really cool to, and it'd be a really interesting way to have that community bond. Additionally, sorry, what was the other part of the question? It was, sorry, my phone turned off.
I think you answered it.
Yeah. I think, being a part of leadership, I helped organize my own prom boutique. We gave free dress, you may have heard of it, we gave free dresses to basically any high school student that came in, whether or not they could afford it. And I think that brought people together. We got to work with other schools apart of leadership, which I thought was amazing. And I think that if you can establish that sense of community in higher, like elementary schools, maybe even middle schools, I think that sense of community would be very valuable in older age groups.
Interesting. Yeah, thanks for your work on that. I've heard of the prom dresses. I love that it's. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to be making comments.
It's okay.
What is your familiarity with the Parks and Recreation Master Plan? Have you had a chance to look at it? And what do you see the abilities of that plan to?
Did look at it, and I took some notes on it. I noticed and value its attention to improving infrastructure. I thought that was really interesting, as well as expanding programs and meeting the needs of the residents across many age groups. As I was mentioning, I thought, I think that's a very valuable part of the community. I think the parks themselves are such a really strong-rooted community for younger residents, as I mentioned. But I think that goal of strengthening it for older residents is also an incredibly noble and really honestly impressive goal. I think one challenge is making the best use of limited space and budget while addressing the evolving needs of like families, sorry, which I think acknowledging that budget is great. And I think that especially because parks are to the public free access, I think taking that to our advantage is impressive and valuable. I think the commission can focus on clear prioritization, community engagement, creative partnerships, such as collaborating with local schools, nonprofits, or environmental groups, that I think that would honestly just help us share resources and expand. I think honestly, I looked at it, I think it's really impressive, like the goals you set, how you've managed to accomplish them, and how it's like, you have a goal and you're working towards it. I think that is how things get done and how that's.
Very good. Okay, to the question of all the different types of residents in Corder Madera, including, for example, families with young children, retirees with grown children, single people, as a commissioner, how would you balance the interests of these various groups?
I think I've volunteered a little bit with ages in the past, so I think I have that connection to older residents. Typically, what they typically want, they love the outdoors, they love to see it, but what they really value is someone who just listens to like their stories and perspectives. But typically, a lot of the time, they don't like the louder spaces. So I think if we are going to, which we are, target the older residents, it would need to be like a quieter environment because it's not as enjoyable for them if it's louder. So I think sectioning it by age group could be really efficient. As terms of single people, I think a lot of single people, they either, of all ages, I think sometimes they prefer it, sometimes they don't, but oftentimes, they sometimes have a dog, so they'll get out and socialize, but if they don't have a child, a pet, they don't really get along with people at work. It's harder for them to feel comfortable in their community and get them out into the community. So I think that would be a struggle as far as younger age groups. I feel like they're involved in the park a lot. And I think for me, my perspectives, as you mentioned, wearing different hats, of course, I'm going to be thinking the perspective of a high school student, but I can also try to be like, okay, if I were older, what would I want to see? Like, what would I think would be the most comfortable? And I think that works well. Of course, I'm going to have a little bit of bias, everyone does, it's kind of hard to avoid it. But if you can manage to acknowledge, okay, this is why I think this, this is why you think this, how can we work these two perspectives together? I think those.
Okay, you were kind of getting to that next question, describing your own strengths and weaknesses. What do you consider the best of working with a group and what are your challenges?
I think one of my strongest strengths would be my collaboration skills. I work very well with others, and I find that I'm the strongest when I work with a team. I'm very reliable. If you give me a task, I will get it done. And I would call myself open-minded in the sense that I can, like I said, acknowledge your perspective, acknowledge mine, try to find a compromise, even if I don't necessarily agree with what you're thinking. But I also have to acknowledge, we may think these two things, but we're doing this for a larger group of people, and we need to think what they would prefer as well as our own. I think one of my weaknesses is I am sometimes overly detailed-oriented in the sense that I'll be focusing on the tiniest detail when there's a bigger picture thing that needs to get done over here, and I have to just put it to side, say, it's okay if it's not exactly perfect, and focus on the thing over here that needs the most attention. I try to separate, as I said, I try to separate personal emotions and preferences and bias. And I think when I give myself that task of saying, I need to acknowledge that my perspective is not what's going to make the best impact, and it has to be what is truly necessary. My dad says it's your perspective, my perspective, and the truth, and I think the truth is what actually needs to get done.
So the second half of that question is kind of related to that. If your personal opinions and emotions run differently to the town's regulations or rules, how do you handle that?
I think if, the way I interpret that question is, my personal morals and values, maybe if they clash with kind of like the opinions or moral values of the town council, I think they don't typically align, and I would value that.
Okay. So the big commitment question, I think you heard me read it before, right? So I'll just remind you briefly that you'd be expected to attend a minimum of 75% of all the scheduled meetings and other meetings as necessary on the fourth Monday of each month, and come prepared to discuss agenda items. And considering these expectations, do you feel you are able to commit to the term you have applied for, for the Parks and Recreation Commission?
I do feel as though I can commit to that, and I'd also like to say, I am unaware of my high school schedule for water polo, which does come in in the fall. But because the meetings are once every month or as needed, I feel the need, I could work around that on both sides and continue to make a commitment to both. But once I get that schedule, I will send it right over and let you know if there's any overlap. So yes, long is the short.
Thank you. And I'm reminded that I forgot to ask our previous candidate for her closing statement, but that doesn't mean you shouldn't get to make one, so if you'd like to.
I think that the opportunity itself to be given this position is amazing in itself, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I think that what, everything that's happened to and with the park, I think is amazing, and it looks great. It's used all the time. Anytime you walk by there, there's half, there's like three dozen kids, the parents, the soccer games, anything going on, and you can always find something to do. And I think that is incredible, and it is such an amazing group and things you've been able to accomplish, and I'd really love to be a part of that.
Thanks very much. Thank you. Okay, so I think at this time, I open it up for comments by the council? Or do we go right to, do we do open time for public comment on these or no?
We don't need to do open time for public comment since those were taken earlier, but you can take comments and initiate the deliberation amongst the council.
Okay. So does anyone have anything to ask of either candidate or any comment? Or do we, we only get to choose one, right?
For this body, it's two.
Oh, we can choose both.
Two out of two.
Yay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'd like to ask one question. When are the water polo meets? Do you know what, is it sort of like every Saturday, every Wednesday? Does it vary?
Brooke, if you don't mind going to the, yeah, I won't capture the audio. So practices, we switch with the boys. So we have four to six in the beginning of the season, and then we switch six to eight. My coach, if you text him in advance, is totally fine if you miss a practice. He's less okay with missing games, but we rarely have a game on Monday, so I don't see a conflict there. We typically receive our schedules in the summer, either late June, mid-July area. Once I get that, I can email both sides about any conflicts that occur. But I think my top priority overall would be the town council. If there were to say a very important game, I would probably, have to be honest and say I would probably miss, but if, I could try my best to come if it was late or any form of that, but I would even, then I'd make sure that all work I was responsible for was still here.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'm happy to move approval of the two applicants for the Parks and Rec Commission.
Second. Can we say all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, yes, thank you both. Or do you really want, do we need to call a roll? No, we're good. I'm really excited about both of you coming on. I had it in my head that I had to choose between you, and I was really bummed out. So I'm glad you can both make it. I've been dreaming that there would be a special events expert coming along one day, and here you are. So I know your restaurant, and I have met you before, which I didn't know until today, but I know your work, so I'm very looking forward to seeing you. And my daughter played water polo at Redwood, and I know you, what a beast you have to be in order to do that sport. So you're a great one to bet on and bring in here, so I'm very excited to have you. And, you know, if you have to miss a meeting, 75%, it's a good. All right, thank you both very much. Thank you. Do I really get to like make comments?
Very impressed.
Okay, so next up is the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And for that, we have, our first applicant is David McPherson. And then we will talk to Tony Garza and Mike Strasser. And just to be clear here, we do have to make a choice here. We have two to choose out of three candidates. So that's always the hardest part. All right, Mr. McPherson, welcome to your new town hall.
I know, I love it.
Would you like to give a one minute opening statement?
Sure. So as many of you know, my family's lived in Corder Madera for 30 years. We're up on Corder Madera Avenue with beautiful unrestricted views of San Quentin.
David, could I ask you to get the microphone some, can we lift it up or? I know it doesn't pick up well online either if it's not.
I'll just, I'll.
Really close, yeah.
Is that better?
Thank you.
So in 2008, Bob Vazio, Cheryl Longanotti and myself were fortunately appointed by the town council then to serve on the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. So it's really been an honor to serve for the last 16 years. Family's involved in every aspect of the town and we just love it here. And I think that two more years on the, on the BPAC, there's important things still to do. And so that's why I'm reapplying.
Great, well, obviously the questions are a little different for a long tenured member like yourself. So what have you accomplished on, on the BPAC or that you, you'd like to see continued? Or you'd like to tell us about?
So I think the most important thing that I have learned from being on the BPAC is that it's a more limited role than many people assume when they first join the BPAC. You know, we're simply an advisory body. We, we serve at the pleasure of the town council. Here primarily to support Adam and the town manager and the Department of Public Works. And so I think what I've learned through all the various, so many important projects is that we're really fulfilling our role and we make life easier for the Department of Public Works in their role in making sure that the policies of the town council are implemented. So if we, we can support them in that role, bring fresh ideas, make sure that the public is heard, then that really is what I've learned.
There's a follow up here on that question of whether or not you have any experience with bicycle pedestrians, circulation, transportation studies, safety, compliance, accessibility laws and the like.
So for over 20 years, I have belonged to every advocacy group for bicycle pedestrian safety in California. So I'm, I have every day in my email, I'm getting updates on ordinances, updates on different facilities that make it safer for multi-use paths. So I'm, I'm kind of inundated, overwhelmed with information. But that makes me a little bit more valuable in dovetailing with the engineers, with the Department of Public Works. Does that answer that question?
Yes, I think you did. Number two is, are, are you a member of any organization that may influence your decisions? Do you have any conflicts that may prevent you from making an unbiased decision concerning agenda items? And what do you hope to accomplish with your participation?
So I don't think, I, I'm a longtime member of Marin County Bicycle Coalition, longtime member of Cal Bike, a longtime member of Rails to Trails. Those are the memberships that I pay. And so I don't think that there's any conflict in, in belonging to those, both national, state and, and local organizations. So no, I don't, I don't think that there's anything that gets in my way. And in terms of what we would accomplish, I just want to be, remain part of the team. I remember Bob, when he was still on the, the town council, we had a similar situation where I think there were three incumbents up and there was a couple, maybe two additional people. And Bob really eloquently and successfully argued that if a member of the BPAC has a good attendance record, comes to the meetings prepared, that it makes sense to kind of hang on to that institutional knowledge and, and you know, give the non-incumbents a chance when there's a real opening for that. I don't know the non-incumbent who's applied and he may be very qualified. But I think I would argue in favor of keeping incumbents that, particularly now that we're going to have a new director of public works come in, I think it makes sense to keep people on the BPAC that have been there for a while.
You're, you're kind of getting to the subject of the next question, which basically is asking you, what challenges do you see BPAC facing in the coming years? What do you think the big challenges are going to be?
Well, one of the challenges is that the current national administration is stripping grant money or anything that's related to bicycle and pedestrian or projects that have actually even been approved. So in the past, while the, the BPAC has not, or in the Department of Public Works, has not relied heavily on federal grants. That's certainly something that we're going to have to keep an eye on when we look at big projects like ever opening the Alto Tunnel, which would take substantial federal money. The only other challenges I think are what we always face. You know, when we're trying to improve the, the safety on multi-use paths, there's only so much real estate, you know, what, what ideas can come to bear to improve what we already have? With the new speed limits on Tempe Pious Drive and, and Paradise. You know, just always constantly looking for new ideas that can be implemented to improve the safety for all the users. So I don't know if that's a challenge, but it's, it's just always something that we're working towards.
I think you hit on one of the challenges, kind of gets to the next one, is the Alto Tunnel. How do we get past this, you know, what did somebody call it? The third rail of Corder Madera politics? Is, is, is there a growing consensus one way or the other that you see? Or what do you see as the way to address that challenge?
There is a group called Friends of Alto Tunnel that has been around for two decades really. And they continue to quietly lobby. If I had a crystal ball, I would say it's always going to come down to money. And so if in fact, we had a different federal administration that was willing to put in significant funds towards something like the tunnel, like we did with the Cal Park Tunnel that goes from, from the ferry, that was almost completely paid for by federal funds. So I think, I think while Friends of Alto Tunnel will continue to lobby, I don't really see any real movement in the next couple of years.
Thank you for that going off script there a little bit with me. Question number four is please describe your strengths and weaknesses as they relate to working with a group. Or if applicable, serving as a committee member, how would you describe your problem solving style?
Collaborative, I think is really more than anything. And also just being prepared, I think, coming in and, and knowing what's on the agenda, coming in with fresh ideas, the ability to listen to the public, the ability to listen to other BPAC members. All of that is, I think, essential to, to being an effective BPAC member.
Okay. So if, I think you've covered that one. And then the commitment question. Well, I think you've answered it. What has your attendance record been so far? Is it over 75%?
Oh, yes. Yes, it's substantially higher than that. I think in 16 years, I have missed two meetings.
Well, thank you for your, thank you for your service, regardless of how this turns out.
My pleasure.
Okay, and you have an opportunity for a one minute closing statement if you'd like.
I think I've said everything I need to say. I don't have anything else to wrap it up. Thank you. Should I stay for the rest of the presentation?
If you, if you'd like, definitely. Okay, up next is, where's my sheet here? I'm sorry. Tony Garzer, sorry. Where is my sheet? It's not that complicated.
Hi, council members, how are you?
Hi, Tony, it's Tony Garzer. Hi, nice to meet you. Would you like to make a one minute opening statement?
Opening statement, sure. I guess opening statement pertaining to why I'm reapplying to BPAC. So a couple of reasons. I, I feel the type of projects that BPAC sees, this committee sees correlates strongly with the type of work that I do. I'm in the world of architecture and the built environment. And, and, and my work means a lot to me as well as all the adjacent things to it, any part of the environment. And you know, I think it's meaningful to be part of that process and creating a safer, more accessible and enjoyable environment here. I'm hoping to bring just another perspective. I hope my perspective is worthy and, and it, it speaks to a bunch of folks out here. I have a, have a small child in the elementary school. I have a couple of college age kids. I've had a history of commuting to San Francisco, to the city. And now I commute out to Nevada and I look for any way I can to walk, bike, smart train, bus, what have you. So that's my intro.
And one thing you mentioned was your experience and expertise as an architect in the built environment. If you could just talk a little bit more about that, what you, what your background is that you would bring to bear on the BPAC?
Sure, so the types of projects I work on are various different types of projects. I, I work with the Bank of Marin, Marin Health. I helped with the new butcher shop right down the street, retail, civic buildings, all types of things. And, and generally, gosh, in the past, well, since 94, with accessibility coming on board, that's a huge part of all of my projects. And, and I, I enjoy it. I enjoy the challenge, you know, I, I really, I really like universal design. It doesn't have to be specific to disabled or whatnot. It just has to be, all types of experiences should be available to all. So I like the challenge of breaking down any barriers there are. But also just, just using real world design technique and everything that includes that accessibility.
Okay, question number two asks, are you a member of any organization that might influence your decisions? Do you see yourself as having any conflicts that may prevent you from making unbiased decisions regarding agenda items?
I don't see any conflicts, at least not now. I suppose there could be something on the private side that I'm involved with that conflicts with a project since there is that adjacency between architecture and, and the, you know, the built environment around it, art scapes and such. But in general, I don't see any conflict there.
Okay. Have you had an opportunity to work with the Department of Public Works here? Or any kind of public works department on any projects? And do you have an understanding of how it operates and what its role is in these public projects?
I like to think that I do have a decent understanding. I don't know all the ins and outs, but personally and professionally, I have worked with Public Works in Corder Madera, Nevada, Sausalito. Personally, you know, driveway project, working on my driveway or, and then, you know, under, I, I like the, I, I like working with them personally because there's all these great pilot programs and grants and funds available. And I love that aspect of it and sharing that with neighbors and those around me professionally on, on many projects.
Have you attended committee meetings in the past of the BPAC? Or you've, you've attended meetings?
I'm a current member.
Oh, you, oh, I forgot you.
A pretty good.
Well, then I hope you've attended at least 75% of them. Okay, so next is describing your strengths and weaknesses and sort of how you work together with a group and, and what your problem solving style is like.
So my strengths is, is I think working with groups, that is my world. I remember back in school, that was the most difficult thing. And we were purposely brought into group projects to learn how to deal with groups. And, and I, I think I, I am strong in that aspect. As an architect, you become the bandleader. And I, you know, for, for most everything I do, I always look at the end goal and try to keep an eye on the goal and, and work with others and, and staying on track. So I think I have the experience to bring that type of.
And as to, as to follow up with, how do you reconcile if your personal opinions and emotions don't go along with the laws and regulations of the town of Corder Madera?
Yeah, I think in, in, in that case, you know, I think listening and learning about all sides of whatever the issue may be, that's generally my starting point for that. Because you, you know, when you do listen to all sides and you, you don't, do learn how things were decided, how they got to the point they're at, what decisions were put into it. I feel that your emotional side becomes tempered and you're able to get on the same page as others.
Okay, and then the commitment question, I guess, since you're already on the BPAC, has your attendance record been 75% or better?
I believe so, I believe so. There was COVID, I had recently, too long ago, so I missed one there. But yeah, I missed a couple, but.
Do you, do you feel comfortable making the commitment? Second Monday of odd months, so it's only every other month, right? And meetings begin at 6:30, run approximately two hours on average. You're considering these expectations. Do you feel you're able to commit the term, commit to the term you have applied for on BPAC?
Yes.
Okay. And would you like to give a closing statement?
I think one thing I, I would like to mention is also mentioned, these, these projects are, are long range for the most, most part. Some happen quickly, but for the most part, they span many terms of BPAC committee members. And I, I feel it's important. I, I mean, whether I'm, whether I continue on as a member, I attend meetings and such and try to continue to be a part of it. Because it is just great seeing all the things that evolve in my community. And, and, and I just love being part of it.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Okay, and our final candidate is Mike Strasser. Is Mike here? Oh, we have, we have one question, follow up question, if that's okay?
Yeah, just a, a really simple question. So this would be your second appointment if appointed? Or how many, how many years have you been BPAC?
Third. All right, thank you. That was my question. Okay, Mike, welcome.
Hi.
Would you like to make an, now you are not an incumbent, correct? I'm sorry, I got you two mixed up. So opening statement, this is your opportunity to share a little bit about yourself.
I am a member of our town for about six years now. We live on Birch Avenue and I have a child that's Neil Cummins. And I am an avid cyclist. I went, I was part of the team at Cal Poly and Stanford. And so I've been really involved in that. And when I was part of the team at Stanford, I also was part of the crew that taught elementary school kids about bicycle safety. And I have been enjoying the bicycle paths of this town. And I think there could be obviously a lot of improvement. And so I want to be part of that problem solving team. And so I want to be part of that, uh, problem-solving team.
Okay. Um, so four questions for you. What motivated you to apply for BPAC? I think you've kind of said that, but maybe go on to explain what experience or expertise would you be bringing to the committee?
Um, starting out with, I guess, the passion behind it is when I, I, I'm a problem solver. I'm an engineer. And so when I look at things, that's part of what I do. I try to figure out how we, what the need is exactly. And identifying the need is the first step. The next step is solving that problem and working as a team to make that happen. Um, so in the spirit of problem-solving, um, for example, in San Luis Obispo, in San Luis Obispo where I went to undergrad, I was instrumental in improving a very complicated intersection, um, for both pedestrians and cars.
So the follow-up question is, do you have any direct experience with bicycle pedestrian circulation, transportation, safety, compliance, and accessibility laws?
Other than that, uh, it's, it's more or less, um, I'm involved in the Elto Tunnel project, sort of, try to push that forward, um, one step at a time, but, um, none, none other than that.
Okay. Have you had an opportunity to work with the Department of Public Works in Corder Madera or any public works department? Or have an understanding of how they operate and what their role is in these projects?
I have an understanding, but I haven't been able to work directly with them.
Okay. Um, have you attended any of the committee meetings in the past and?
I've watched some of the recorded sessions as well as attended the last, same person.
Okay. And, uh, if you can please describe your strengths and weaknesses as they relate to working with a group and uh, your problem-solving style?
So I was, formerly I was the CEO and founder of a startup that was venture-backed. So that's inherently working with others to figure out solutions in the most efficient way possible. Um, and, um, my problem-solving style, again, is, it's engineering. It's really, I just gave a lecture to my child's class today and it's about persistent and unrelenting curiosity, problem-solving and working as a team that defines engineering. So I feel like I embody those three things. And so problem-solving is really understanding the perspectives of others, trying to incorporate that in the solutions so that addresses the needs of everyone. So I'm passionate about not just bicycling, but also pedestrian safety, families in strollers, the elderly. There's a lot of empathy that I have for other groups.
No weaknesses?
Um, I guess you could say my weakness probably in the, the capacity of this role would be my patience. I have to kind of let things happen over multiple years, as you said, and, uh, things don't happen overnight.
Yeah, especially I think in a small town, you're right about that. Okay. So then the commitment question. The BPAC meets on the second Monday of odd months. Meetings begin at 6:30, uh, average two hours. Are you able to commit to that? And are you kind of around and involved so you can commit even more time? Or is that, how are you feeling about your time availability?
I'm, have a high level of integrity. So when I commit to something, I follow through. So in the projects that I work on, I'm fully committed. So I'm willing to offer that same commitment to this committee.
Okay. So I guess considering these expectations, you feel you are able to commit to the term that you have applied for on the BPAC?
Yes.
Okay. And would you like to give a closing statement?
I have empathy for your decision at this point, having three people apply for two spots. And especially in a volunteer organization where the, the, the spirit that everyone is contributing is really just to make our society better. And so it's, it's always a really great thing when, in a town where there can be oversubscribed in each of the positions. And I, I'm a member of the PTO for my, uh, elementary school and it's quite the opposite. There's a lot of vacant positions that we're trying to fill and people don't want to step up. So I wish it was the other way around in that case, but, um, so it's, it's a really good position. These guys are amazing, dedicated. So, uh, I don't want to step, push someone out, but I wish there was a spot for everybody. So I understand your position.
Thank you. It is, it is a bit of an embarrassment of riches when we have really great candidates apply. So thank you. Thanks for your time. Okay. I'll bring it back to the council for any questions or deliberation, discussion?
I'd like to ask Mr. Strasser a question.
Into the mic, Jim, louder.
Okay. I'm sort of talking my book since I'm fixated on finance and so on, but have you given any thought to the Finance Advisory Committee if we, when we set that up and/or the Sales Tax Override Committee? When we set that up since.
Yeah, I attended one of the council meetings.
A lot of our projects.
And I, and I, and I saw that there was the, the representative, representing the, the town for the Finance Committee. Yeah, I think there might be another committee that, if I'm not selected, maybe I can help out in other capacities.
Okay. And my other question is going from, I think, Lexa, there's a gravel path, uh, next to the Upper Canal.
I live on that path. It's my backyard.
What's the quality of that right now? Because we got resurfaced about eight years ago and I haven't walked it lately.
The gravel path, I think I resurfaced like three years ago. Um, it's deteriorating.
Okay.
Fortunately. It's, I mean, I have a philosophy around continuity and bicycle paths and like you get to a certain point and then it's like, there's this gap. And it's like, this doesn't reconcile. And I think that might also be one of those projects.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, motions? Can you choose? Yeah. Do you want to make a recommendation, anybody?
Well, I will say, as always, in this town, we do have an embarrassment of riches of people who step forward. And, um, you know, it's really impressive and the body of knowledge that people bring to us is always amazing. I have a, a philosophy that especially in a small town, um, we do need to, not concentrate the, um, abilities to serve in one place. And so my colleagues have heard me say this many times when we are appointing. You know, there, I've been in organizations where all of the institutional knowledge rests in one person. And when that person leaves, everybody's running around going, what do we do? What do we do? But I really believe that in a small town, we need to make sure that those who want to serve, uh, have an opportunity. Um, and if we keep appointing the same people over and over again, then we, we're concentrating the knowledge and we're not building that, building out that community and that responsibility that people want to take. So I am very impressed with how much Mr. McPherson has served for all these years. But I think that given the opportunity to bring someone else in so that they can actually learn as much as he's learned and contribute as much as he's contributed, my, uh, support would go toward, uh, Mr. Strasser and, uh, Mr. Garza. So I'm just putting that out there as a general philosophy that I have for, for all of our bodies. I think that we need to, those who want to serve need to have an, an opportunity to serve and not feel that, you know, there are, you know, that things are lifetime appointments if we need them. So.
Uh, any other comments or discussion regarding this choice? Anybody? Fred? Eli?
Yeah, I, I will say I have a slightly different perspective, although I totally understand where you're coming from. And I think your point makes perfect sense about wanting to have the opportunity for new people to come in and, and make sure that we're generating sort of a pipeline of, of continuity on these boards and commissions. Um, I, I would say though, I think in, in, you know, I think that's an excellent principle that I agree with. I think another principle that, that I hold is I'm not comfortable uh, appointing somebody to a board and commission if they haven't been able to make it to one of those meetings yet. Which I see on, on the application here. It looks like, uh,
Oh, no, he, he'd gone.
Okay. So, okay. So maybe it was at the time of the application, but you've been able to go since. Um, so yeah, okay. So that's great. I think, you know, I'm, I'm just thinking about sort of depth of experience, right? I mean, I, you know, I, um, you know, for what it's worth, like before I decided to run for town council, I, I, I attended a year's worth of council meetings before, uh, before that election. You don't need to do that on BPAC. Um, but I'm, but I'm, I'm, you know, I'm just saying, I think, uh, you know, it's, it's nice to see that folks have maybe been, been thinking about this for a slightly longer time and have taken more time to immerse themselves, um, in, in the issues and in the work of the, uh, advisory body. With that said, uh, Mr. Strasser, I so appreciate both your involvement already with, uh, you know, with, uh, through the school and, and your willingness to step up and serve the town on, on one of these advisory committees. So, you know, I think for this particular committee, personally, my support would go towards the two incumbents. But I would ask you, if you're, if you, if you are willing to serve and your heart isn't set on BPAC, first of all, thank you for, for checking the box yes, so we can keep your application on file, especially in case, uh, you know, next time, uh, an, uh, a vacancy comes up on BPAC. But also, as Councilmember Andrew said, if, if you would do us the honor of considering, uh, serving on one of the other boards and committees where we're, you know, really looking for, you know, smart, engaged citizens like yourself, that would be much appreciated as well. So, thank you.
Fred?
Yeah, I appreciate all three of you. Um, from my perspective, and I appreciate Rosa's comments, Eli's comments. I know at times we just have varying opinions. Um, I'm okay with reappointing the two incumbents. But Mike, what I'd like to see you really do is apply for the Park and Rec Commission. I think, no, really, I think having two young kids, being on the PTO, um, and also there is some overlap with the biking stuff sometimes on paths. I think you would be a good fit for Park and Rec, I really do. Because again, it just adds another dimension with having kids, fuming into the Park and Rec Commission. I, I really mean that. I'm, I'm sorry, what's that? Yeah, I, I just think you would be a, a, a good fit. And I know we, I think we have like three people dropping off that commission. And I think all of them have kids that are in either Neil Cummins or Hall Middle School. So I think if you slid into that, I think you, you're, it's an opportunity for you. I really do. Thanks.
Could I ask a point from the lawyer or town manager? Would it be possible for us to consider him this evening for Parks and Recreation? No. Because wasn't there a, there's an open spot? God, that would be wonderful.
It's not on. Has about eight applicants for five spots. And I think the Sales Tax Oversight Committee has about, how many's? Three, uh, committee, yeah, three applicants for two.
We're popular these days. Okay, uh, Jim, would you like to weigh in on your thoughts here? You want to point all three? Well, I feel the same way. I want to find, definitely find a place, uh, for Tony. Uh, you know, I do see Rose's point because I've seen a lot of, um, situations where if, if the older people kind of hang on to things for too long, that others lose interest. And I totally agree that we need to really encourage new people to apply. So maybe, maybe David could be on the Finance Committee. I don't know. I, I, I'm, does somebody want to make a motion and we'll see where it goes? I mean?
I'll, I'll make a motion to appoint the two incumbents.
Is there a second?
Happy to second that per my comment.
Make a roll call?
Okay. Councilmember, um, Andrews? I'll come back to you. Councilmember Beckman?
Let him lead the last.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas? No. Mayor Rivasio?
No.
And Councilmember Andrews? Okay, thank you. That motion does not pass.
So can I hear another motion, please, Rosa? You, okay, I think I know what motion you're asking me to make. Okay, I make a motion that we, uh, appoint, uh, Tony Garza and Mike Strasser to the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Do I have a second? Roll call, please.
Okay. Councilmember Andrews? Councilmember Beckman?
No.
Councilmember Casissa?
No.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Rivasio?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries.
Okay. Um, we really want to make room for everybody who wants to volunteer in this town and, uh, I hope that you will continue to be involved in lots of ways.
Congratulations to our.
Congratulations, uh, Mike and Tony. And we will move on now to the Client Action Committee. We have Brittany Blair and Penelope Trot. Are you both here? Oh, and you're even sitting together. Well. And do we get to appoint both of them? Or do we choose one? We have to choose one. Oh, no. Oh, there is a recommendation on who to choose?
Just to choose one.
Just to choose one. Okay. Because we are running a little bit late, so I want to not take any unnecessary time of these gals or us, if not necessary. But let's see, who is this? Is this Penelope?
Uh, Brittany.
Hi. Let's see here. Okay, Climate Action Committee. Brittany, you have a minute to just introduce yourself to us.
Awesome. Thank you. Hi, my name's Brittany Blair. I'm a junior at Redwood High School. I just want to kind of give you my background. I'm a student in leadership. I started as a class representative since freshman year. Sophomore year, I was elected as vice president. Um, and now I am the president of my school site council and I will be continuing that position next year. I'm also, um, an athlete representative for my club swim team, Thundercoast Aquatics. And I, I'm on the Pacific Swimming Athlete Committee. And yeah, it's just a little bit about me.
Okay. And why the Climate Action Committee? What is it about that committee? What would you hope to help make happen there?
Well, I'm really interested in the Climate Action Committee because I do care about climate change. And I believe that it is a real and urgent problem that needs to be solved fast. And while I think climate change is a global issue, I do believe that starting locally is important. And making differences starts in your own community and at a local level, which is why I want to be part of creating our own solutions, um, in Corder Madera. And a goal, oh, sorry, that's the next question.
Okay. Um, can you explain what qualities and experience you would bring to, uh, the committee related to climate change, sustainability and/or community outreach?
Well, as I said, I'm in the Leadership Program for Redwood High School, so I know how to work with people. I'm, um, put in a lot of teamwork situations with collaborations as well and, um, committee service. I've been part, um, of my school governance efforts and I represent student voices in meetings. I also am part of the Redwood High School allocations grant community or committee, which is where I review faculty proposals and advocate for funding that supports student welfare and academic growth. And then, as I touched on before, beyond school, I'm a team representative on the Pacific Swimming, um, Athlete Committee, and that's where I plan regional events and support student athlete wellness. I also have a strong academic foundation in AP Biology, which is a course that I have taken this last school year and as well as Chemistry. Um, these classes have helped me deepen my understanding of climate change and climate science as well as stability and sustainability. And I can utilize my knowledge of statistics and Python coursework, um, which are both courses that I've taken at UC Berkeley and at College of Marin, um, to provide data-driven and science-based policy analysis. And I'm just really excited to connect that knowledge with the real-world policy and community action.
Thank you. What is your familiarity with the town's climate goals and climate action work plan?
So I have reviewed the CAC and I have a couple of notes. I found that the CAC serves as an adversary body to the town council and they focus on reducing greenhouse as an adversary body to the town council, and they focus on reducing greenhouse emissions and implementing the Climate Action Plan, the CAP. Um, I learned that the CAP was updated in December 2020, and they set goals to reduce emissions 40% below 1990 levels by 2030, and 80% by 2050, which align with the California state objectives. Key strategies include billing, building electrification, enhancing electric vehicle infrastructure, and promoting sustainable transportation.
Okay. Can you, uh, describe your strengths and weaknesses when it comes to working, uh, with a committee, and how you would describe your problem-solving style?
Well, strengths, I say, um, I'm able to bring people together, collaborating with my peers is one of my strengths. Um, I got this experience from my previous allocation committee and psych council, where I work with, um, a diverse group of people, my principal, my faculty, and my school teachers, support staff, as well as parents. And I make sure that everyone's voice is heard by compromising and adding everyone's ideas so we can work effectively as a team and make sure that everyone feels represented, represented. I also, um, I'm also very efficient with my work. If you give me a task, I will do it. I will get it completed for you, and I will make sure that the task is done in a timely manner, but is also done well and meets the needs and requirements.
And how would you reconcile when personal opinions and emotions run into conflict with the town's rules or regulations?
Well, if my personal views or emotions conflict with the town's policies or regulations, I would prioritize my responsibilities of my role. I understand that serving on a public committee means representing the broader interest of the committee and a Corder Madera, so I would uphold the established policies and set aside my own opinions. But if there was a time and place for me to be able to share my perspective, then I would. But I would, again, also understand that it's a group decision, and that, um, the framework, like where we're operating in is for everyone, and not just for myself.
Okay. And then there's the question of commitment, which I'm sure you read. The Climate Action Committee meets the third Wednesday of each month from 4:30 to 6:00 PM. You do have an obligation to attend in person, and expected to attend a minimum of 75% of meetings in a fiscal year. Also familiarizing yourself with the agenda and doing the, reading the staff reports, so forth. Do you feel with all of that, that you have the, uh, time and are able to commit to the one-year term on the Climate Action Committee?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you very much, and you're welcome to make a one-minute, uh, closing statement if you'd like.
Well, I just want to thank every one of you for, um, considering my application, and I'm really grateful for the chance to, um, be on the Climate Action Committee. And if selected, I'd be honored to bring my experience and knowledge and commitment to the committee as well. And I'm also eager to learn from everyone else on the committee and contribute meaningfully and help make progress in our town's climate change.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up, we have Penelope, Penelope Trot. Hi there, Penelope, welcome.
Yeah.
Okay, Penelope, would you like to make an opening statement?
I would, thank you very much. Um, so my name is Penelope Trot. I have been a Corder Madera resident for nine years now. Um, similarly to Brittany, I'm also in leadership. I was elected senior class vice president for next year. I have been in leadership in ASB for around two years now, since my sophomore year. I'm also a staff editor for the Redwood Bark. And so I'm the opinion editor, editor currently, but I was the photography editor last cycle. And so that's taught me a lot about collaboration. Um, yeah, I have two younger siblings who love playing in Corder Madera and Town Park. And yeah, it's just a very personal, I have a really good connection to Corder Madera, and I've loved living here, so.
So why the Climate Action Committee? What is it about climate, and what do you hope to accomplish on the committee?
I'm very passionate about combating climate change. I'm part of a nonprofit currently that's designed to get sustainable crafts for teachers and students, and to reuse the materials that are kind of being thrown away right now. So that's called SPARE. And then I'm also, um, I've done a lot of research for Bark and looked into climate change and consumption, especially overconsumption, and looking at specifically how fast fashion has caused so many problems in today's world. Um, I'm specifically interested in the consumption-based emissions part of this committee, but I'm not sure if that's something I'll be working a ton on, but I'm very passionate about that. Um, I also specifically want to add my youth perspective to this committee because I think it's really important to represent, um, like the youth population and hear our voices. Um, I'm planning to major in political science when I go to college, and so I think this would be a really great learning opportunity to learn about how local government works, um, as that's like a career path I would be really interested in going down. But mainly, I'm just really passionate about climate change. I've been doing projects on it since eighth grade, um, researched projects for bio, um, and I'm just really want to do something because a lot of people don't realize that this is a problem that's really, it really is, has a local root. And I think that's something that a lot of people might not think about. They think more about like how they can help globally, and they feel like they're not doing enough. But I want to show people that if you look locally, there are so many opportunities.
Okay. What is your, uh, familiarity with the town's climate goals and the climate action work plan?
So I would say I'm semi-familiar. I've attended a few meetings online and watched them, but, and I've also done some reading. I looked into the same statistic about, um, reducing emissions 40% and, um, like the whole 1990 through 2030 through 2050. Um, I would like to do more research. I think that's my big area of growth for me, but I am committed to doing the research. And I think, um, in terms of learning about the climate, uh, the kind of climate plan that this committee has, I would like to look, to grow more in that area, but I have done some research.
Okay. And then our questionnaire asks you to describe your strengths and weaknesses as they relate to working with a group, and talk a little about your problem-solving style.
Um, I think one of my biggest strengths is my communication skills. Through Bark and leadership, I've had to do some pretty tough interviews, and really, I'm in the outreach committee right now, which is basically getting involved with our community members, both really local and in a more broader sense. And so I think that's taught me a lot about how to network and really get my voice across. I think also leadership has taught me when it's important to stand up and take and put yourself at the front, and also when it's important to just step back and let other people get their point across and get their, and have, and have them be heard. Um, I have some professional experience with communication. I've interviewed, um, health instructors across Corder Madera, and I also interviewed and spoke to a New York Magazine journalist. Um, so I think my biggest strengths are collaboration and communication in both those senses from leadership and Bark.
Yeah, you're supposed to name a weakness, too.
Oh, yes. I think, I think my biggest weakness is that I'm definitely a perfectionist, but I feel like I could also make that a strength. I just struggle sometimes with, if something's not perfect, I need to keep perfecting it and keep perfecting it, even if that has a cost to my own time management. So I think that's something I've worked on a lot since freshman year all the way up to junior year, and I'm really dedicated to that.
Thanks for that. Okay, so the big commitment question, third Wednesday of each month, 4:30 to 6, plus other obligations as, as asked, uh, minimum of 75% of the scheduled meetings a year. Do you feel like you can make that commitment to the committee?
I do.
Okay, and so if you'd like, you can make a one-minute closing statement.
Um, I just want to say that I really want to, I really appreciate you considering my application, and I would love the opportunity to, um, encourage people to live a more sustainable life and do the best they can to help our community, um, combat the issue of climate change. I also would just really have a lot to learn from all of you about local government and politics, which is a huge passion of mine. So I just appreciate this time so much. Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So with that, I'll bring it back to the council. Would anybody like to ask any follow-up questions or make any comments? Yes, Eli?
I have one follow-up question that I would like to ask, uh, both applicants, and then you can take turns, uh, coming up and giving your answers if you don't mind. But the question is, um, you know, I think we all kind of get that climate change is, is like an existential threat, and it's got to be our top priority. But I think what we've seen, uh, is that despite this being a, a problem where it's so important that every single person in, in our society take action, it's so expensive for people to take the action that they need to take and that we're asking them to take. And it feels like affordability and the, and the cost of living crisis are kind of becoming this like second existential problem that's getting in the way of our ability to address climate change. So I wanted to just get both of your thoughts real quick on, you know, sort of affordability as it, you know, as it serves as a barrier to addressing climate change, and any thoughts you might have. Feel, feel free to be creative, um, you know, but just thoughts that you might have around ways that we could address that.
And, and we do need you to go back to the microphone, so, to give your answer, if that's okay. You can go together.
You can walk slow to think about it, too.
You can Rochambeau for who goes first. No, I'm kidding.
Um, I think that raises a really good point. I, not to draw the topic away from climate change, but I just recently did a piece about, um, funding for school lunches at Redwood, and I was very surprised to learn that around 27% of students that eat school lunch at Redwood have to do that for financial reasons. And I think Marin in general has this kind of, not facade, but just idea, it's a very wealthy community. And so I think sometimes people can forget that there are such affordability issues. So I think connecting it back to climate change, I think finding ways, I mean, I don't know if this is long-term sustainable, but I would love to find ways to fundraise or get people involved in helping to donate because we're both in leadership, and we've had a great success with fundraising and getting people to help out their communities. And I think Corder Madera has such a strong community in itself that, um, finding any ways to lessen the cost a little bit to help make things more affordable, affordable would be great. Um, currently the non...
Okay. Thanks very much. And Brittany?
Um, yeah, I, I agree. I think that, you know, Marin is really expensive, and there is that bubble within Marin where people, again, yeah, they do forget that there are affordability, um, conflicts, and especially going to Redwood in high school, you see a lot of kids, like, they like, they have nice clothes, they have nice stuff. But, you know, I, I understand that there's like hardship with that. But I think that using this and pushing it forward within our community is important for climate change. And we have, I have like ideas, like to kind of combat that as well. Um, building off of something I worked on since middle school, I would always bike. My dad and I started a little group in our neighborhood. We would bike to school, and eventually I would bring on my friends, and we brought on other people, and eventually our group came up to about 30 people of kids just like biking to school. Um, and I thought it was a pretty amazing thing that my dad and I did because not only like do these like little small baby steps help the environment, but they also kind of bring our community together and make us more closely knit together and tight.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Okay, bringing it back to council, is there any follow-up discussion? Would anyone like to make a motion? I understand we may choose one candidate of the two. So would anyone like to propose a, a choice? Now it's getting tough now.
I know how this is going to go because we've got two incredible applicants, and it's clear that you guys are both very thoughtful. Did we turn that podium microphone off, maybe?
Somebody's dinging.
Get a little feedback. Thank you. Um, so it's clear that you guys are both very thoughtful and very engaged. Um, and I, I so appreciate you both wanting to step up and contribute, uh, your experience and, and your expertise and your passion to, to helping the town address this problem. I wish we could appoint both of you to make matters worse. We also have to make a decision in four minutes, um, because that's when we have to start our, our next council meeting. Um, so I think just...
We're allowed to be a couple minutes.
Okay, okay.
Don't worry about it.
Well, so I think, you know, realizing that the reality is that we can't have both of you, which is a huge bummer, I think I would lean, uh, towards Penelope, and the reason for that is the journalism experience, which I think is a unique, uh, asset that you would bring to the Climate Action Committee, where so much of the work that, that we have to do at this committee is about communicating and educating the public on the importance of the, the stuff that we're doing and the stuff that we're asking the community to do, um, and also, you know, educating them and communicating with them, the resources available to them through the town and through the county and through all levels of government to, to help, um, you know, get financial assistance, for example. So I think communication is like so key to everything that we have to do around addressing climate change. And so I think that's, that's why I would, uh, move to appoint Penelope to the youth spot on the Climate Action Committee, although Brittany is fantastic as well, and I, it kills me that we can't have both of you.
Okay, is there a second on Penelope, or do, is there some other position that we would like to hear about?
I can make the second on Penelope, but, but again, both of you did a really great job. I think Penelope, I just heard more passion, no offense, Brittany, just more passion coming from you about climate change and the environment. It's just, I could feel that motion coming from you, the passion. So I think that's what kind of put me over the edge with you. So, but, but both of you did a great job.
Okay, Rosa, Jim, either? Both? Oh, so just to mention again about the, um, the ambassador program?
I, yeah, I was going to, um, ask, uh, Mayor, if I may. I just wanted to add that, um, for the staff report, I did, um, ask our Climate Action, um, Coordinator, uh, Phoebe Golden to provide some feedback on how, um, things turned out with pointing an alternate last year. And, um, she actually recommended that we stick to having one, um, primary appointee. And she stated that the, um, Climate Action Committee is renewing their, um, has renewed their Student Ambassador Program, which, um, is where student ambassadors serve as a volunteer liaison between the Climate Action Committee and the student populations within Corder Madera to help increase student involvement, foster dialogue between youth and the committee, and encourage broader community engagement and local climate action efforts. So there is an opportunity for some involvement, um, for the person who...
Ask that Brittany be, uh, in that, be welcomed into that position, or is that another application she would need to file?
Uh, there is an application she would need to submit because that is considered, um, by the committee itself. And I'll make sure that I connect with Phoebe to pass on what we already have, and then work with whomever, um, doesn't get appointed to this body, uh, to that body.
Great. Any other thoughts? Okay, so, um, there is a, a motion, I believe, to nominate, uh, or have Penelope serve in the position of Climate Action Committee member, and a second from Fred? Was that your second, Fred? So can we have a vote?
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Rivasio?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Thank you both very much. You were both very impressive, and, uh, I agree with Eli that, that ability to do outreach to the community through journalism, it's a rare skill. And I know the Climate Action Committee is looking for it. We're all looking for it. So once you get that one going, come and talk to us about the rest of the committees. No. But thank you both very much for, for being here and for wanting to get involved. It really is heartening for me. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so with that, um, are we ready to adjourn? Do we have any other sort of...
Um, we could adjourn that...
...condition that we need to do here at the end?
No, there, there's nothing else at the end.
Okay, so we will adjourn and be back in just five... Okay, so we will adjourn and be back in just five minutes for the regular town council meeting.